I hear the last one didn't go well. Oh, we're at a little bit different angle out there tonight. Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order if you'd please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. And Sean, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Excused.
Councilmember Brown. Councilmember De Corsi. Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Pelosa.
Here.
Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
All right. We have no announcements, proclamations, or presentations this evening. We will move to appointments. We have the Human Services Committee, City Council, to confirm the appointment of the following to the Human Services Committee for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2021. Shanice Diddo, Tammy Gordine, Sue Miller, and Sean Parkhurst Payton. Or Peton, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Wells.
I move for the approval of the above-listed human service members.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Trump Manuel.
I second that, ma'am.
You want to say it again?
I second that, ma'am.
There we go. Thank you. Councilmember Wells, did you have anything to say?
Yeah, once again, like Councilmember Holman always alludes to, we're lucky to have people who are interested in volunteering for our committees. And as the mayor shared with me, it appears this fills out our total committee. And you can go online and review the members of the committee. And also, she says, that there's an application so that you can be put into our so-called group of incredible volunteers for potential consideration in the future if there's a vacancy.
Right. Each one of our boards and commissions now has its own page on our City of Auburn website. And so you can find out what each one of those boards and commissions is responsible, action-wise, and who the members are, and an application for each. All right. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. Oh, Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Mayor, on this webpage, will it have...
Webpage, will it have their pictures on there so this way we can...
I don't believe it has photos at this point in time.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the appointment for the fore-named members for a term to expire December 31, 2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right. Do we have any agenda modifications, Sean?
There's been updated, updated special focus area worksheet and updated exhibit to resolution 5399 provided to you on the dais.
Thank you. And councilmembers, you all have those? Okay. All right. We have no public hearings this evening, but we will move on to audience participation. This is a place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the City Council on any issue. Those wishing to speak are reminded to sign in on the form provided, and please limit comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Please come forward to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Greg Bush. I'm with Wireless Policy Group, and I'm here on behalf of AT&amp;T tonight. As council may already be aware, the FCC has published its final declaratory order. And this has prompted a new wave of small cell and wireless ordinances up and down, well, I assume the United States, but I've experienced a lot in Washington so far. And this morning, AT&amp;T provided a letter containing AT&amp;T's comments on Auburn's proposed changes to its right-of-way code for small wireless facilities. I'd like to focus on three issues from the letter. First is requirement that applicants provide proof of non-interference with RF emissions. Request for clarification on how the city will review proposals for new poles in the public right-of-way. And finally, our interest in the draft engineering standards for small wireless facilities. First, we, AT&amp;T suggests that the city delete the proposed requirement that an applicant provide proof that a small wireless facility will not interfere with other wireless facilities, including the city's automated meter facilities. This is because federal law preamps the regulation of RF regulations, RF emissions, by local jurisdictions. And we suggested the city delete the Section 2, being in compliance with federal law. Second, AT&amp;T has concerns about how the city will process applications for new poles in the public right-of-way. This is because of the language in the proposed code. The proposed code states that the city, quote, "will permit small wireless facility deployment on existing or replacement poles or structures," end quote, when the proposal meets the engineering design standards. We suggest that the city clarify the process for an application for a new pole in the right-of-way, which may be needed if an existing pole is not available. Finally, we would like to thank staff in the city and express our continuing interest to work with you in the future. We would greatly appreciate being notified in advance of when a copy of the draft engineering standards will be available. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? You, and then you, Brian.
Hi, my name is Leela Vaga, and I'm here today on behalf of Verizon Wireless. I'm a network engineer with Verizon team.
And your address, please.
My address. I'm a Seattle resident. My home address is 208 Northwest 48th Street in Seattle, and our offices are in Bellevue, Washington. So I'd like to speak just to the same issues that Greg was addressing. First, let me thank Auburn. Taking a step to address small cell wireless facilities in the right-of-way right now is very timely, but it's also very helpful for us in our desire to bring high-speed data services to the community. And so we'd like to thank staff and to thank the council for being ahead of the curve on this one and really thinking ahead in terms of how to bring this technology into the community. Overall, we really appreciate the code that has been drafted. There are a few points that I'd like to bring to your attention, but as a whole, the effort's really very positive. The first point is that when it comes to those technical design standards, input from the industry can be very valuable because this is a very technical topic and a very quickly evolving topic. So I'd urge the city to hold a stakeholders meeting when evaluating those standards, to include both wireless carriers but also the pole owners. Puget Sound Energy has certain standards in their safety standards that must be met that impact how we can design our sites. So having that input really makes a big difference. There are two specific items that I wanted to point out in the draft code before you that just could potentially be limiting factors. The first is the under 20.14.30A with the five limit, five-note limit on batching. These projects often come in in groups of between 10 and 40 at a time. And while they can be submitted under multiple batches, it is something that isn't compliant with the FCC order to limit that to five. So we just encourage the city to either change that to just multiple or to look at a number that is more in line with what the project sizes typically are. And then the second issue is the issue with the, on same section but under F, the last sentence. On the projected power density of the facilities compliant with the Federal Communications Commission rules. And that's similar to what Greg brought up with regard to regulating signal frequencies. That's something that we are actually heavily regulated on under the FCC. And so in order to make this compliant with the FCC order, we'd ask that the words "on the projected power density of the facilities" be removed. Also, in the, coming from the industry, I don't, I'm not exactly sure what power density of the facilities would refer to. So perhaps it's a matter of clarifying the language in terms in a way that is more clear. And those are really, we do support the comments of AT&amp;T as well. But again, really overall, a wonderful, or a good code that we can work with and a wonderful start on this issue. And we look forward to the day when we can bring small cells to Auburn. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian?
Good evening. My name is Brian Gunn. I live at 2305 27th Place Southeast here in Auburn. Want to thank the mayor and the council for the chance to speak. I wanted to call to your attention something that I found out about recently, which is the King County Cities Climate Collaboration. It is a group of cities that is working with the King County government in order to take strong action to reduce greenhouse gas emissions because there's an acknowledgement that it's really, it's time to start taking some positive action on this. I don't think we need to get into a debate on whether or not climate change is real here. There isn't time in three minutes to cover that anyway. But there are a lot of good things that I see in this presentation, in this collaboration that's proposed here, and I think it's actually underway. There are things that would sustain and grow transit service throughout King County, increase countywide renewable energy use consistently over the next few years. Also, things to protect and restore the health of urban forests. And this is something which is really meaningful to me. If we, we can do all the efficiency work that we want and get, you know, clean fuels, all of that. If we don't plant more trees, we're in a world of hurt because that's how we take the carbon out of the atmosphere that's been put in. So I think that that would be something that we could move forward with and maybe get a tree planting kind of policy going. So the cities that have decided to collaborate with King County include Mercer Island, Snoqualmie, Shoreline, Tukwila, Seattle, Renton, Kirkland, Redmond, Issaquah, Bellevue, Sammamish, Burien. Why isn't Auburn on this list? I'd really like to see the City Council take action to join this collaboration. Thank you.
Jeff, do you want to, we did, didn't we?
Yeah, I was just looking up, I don't have the exact date, but we did bring the K-4C initiative before City Council for study session back. I want to say in September. And it was at that time that, after a conversation and K-4C staff joined study session at that time, that we did move forward with joining the initiative. So they may be, have some materials that they still need to do to, in terms of updating that decision. But we are on board with that.
I'm looking at the map, too. I pulled it up quickly, and Auburn is not on there, but we'll make sure to correct that. Thank you, Brian. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Gentlemen, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Steve Labadia. I own a home on the corner of the newly constructed street of 7th Northeast and 8th Street Northeast in Auburn. There's been development there, and I'm hoping this is the forum to present some concerns with the development that's being done there. They, it appears they're putting in seven homes, but they installed a retention pond. And in the city of Auburn, it's pretty sandy soil. They haven't reinforced the sides on it. And myself and many of the neighbors are concerned that it's just going to collapse. I mean, the sides are just going to keep collapsing from our yards because they put this retention pond up against our, adjacent to our property. We also have concerns with the elevation that they're, they came in and they brought in more soil and raised that property. So it's right, it's raised up against our property, and it slopes right off. So any runoff is going to come in our yards. Many of us have drain fields that this can create issues with. So also, they've, they've put in a retaining wall. It's, they just recently did that. And on the north side of the road, it's just real lightweight bricks that are not bonded or anything. And I can go over there and just pick them up, you know, easily. And I'm afraid that they're going to end up being missing. So within a short amount of time. I express that to the developer and haven't got a response back from that. Also, many of the neighbors, because of the road going in, we had a lot of shaking, like earthquake-type shaking, from the heavy equipment. And we're told that it's a civil issue, but we're asking, how do we approach the developer?
A civil, a civil issue on what?
If we wanted to take it to court or anything. It's a civil issue. Although, we understood the road belonged to the city of Auburn. And the road is, when they developed the road, it's, that's what caused the issues. So. So is this a proper...
So it absolutely is. What I'm going to do is ask either Ingrid and/or Jeff to meet with you off to the side and get your contact information, Mr. Labadia. And, and they might be able to, if they're familiar with the seven-home development, they might be able to give you some information now, but definitely correspond with you, communicate with you on...
Some of the concern.
On some of the other issues, yes.
Great. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd ask the councils in indulgence to allow me to give my phone number to Steve Labadia. He's an old high school friend of mine that we've lost contact, and I just want to...
Well, now you know where he lives.
This is not to do with the appointment. This is only the fact that we've known each other for...
You can do a hug. Oh, you can do a shake, yes. Yes, good, good. Yes, please.
I'm Ginny Anderson or Georgine Anderson, and I live next door to Steve in the old Armstrong home. And when the city put in our street...
Sorry, we do need your address.
Yeah. We had a lot of damage, and...
Ma'am, we do need your address for the record.
Oh, 635 H Street, Northeast Auburn. And we had a lot of damage, and so a claim went in to the insurance company. And we had all that repaired. And now, when this started, I documented some days that I actually was sitting in my chair and it started vibrating. I thought it was the beginning of an earthquake. And then the next day, I was sitting in the kitchen and the floor was vibrating, and my table and chairs were vibrating, and it was when they were packing down the street. And so all of our repairs were done, and now some of the old cracks have reopened, and I've gotten some new ones. I have one on the patio that was just replaced, and in front that was just replaced. And they weren't there like three months ago. So it's due to that shaking. And so I need to, how do we do this? Do we contact the contractor to get the insurance company and then ask them to send out somebody to? I don't know how to do this.
So I think those are, a lot of those are still going to be civil issues, but Jeff and Ingrid, are there any other neighbors here that are...
Oh, some are working at the school tonight, and some are still working and, or at home yet.
Okay, I just wanted to, if there were any more that were going to speak.
Yeah.
But then we can have Jeff and Ingrid meet with you and Mr. Labadia off to the side or out in the lobby.
Okay.
To talk about...
The other issue is the, the traffic's going to greatly increase because all those people and from the apartments behind are going to come out on that street and go down 8th Street up to 8th. And 8th and 8th Street are not marked as a crosswalk. I have, I've seen people trying to get across there and cannot get across there. And somebody's going to get killed on that corner. There's a lot of kids that are on the other side of 8th that walk up to the school every morning, go home at night. There's a lot of older people that go up to Fred Meyer. And there's, if you go by it, there's no, there's not even a sign that says there's a crosswalk there. There's no mark. There needs to be a yellow flashing light that's like on that one up from the post office. So when people cross there, because it's not a continual traffic like you'd have downtown. But it's definitely the times that school starts and school gets out and occasionally other people that, you know, walk uptown. So that's a real danger, and all the neighbors have been concerned about that.
Okay, so...
It's going to get worse.
And so our Public Works Director will, will share with you that we only put in crosswalks where the standards, where it's met the standards that are required to put in a crosswalk. And a lot of places, the standards are not met, and it is dangerous. And that's why there is no crosswalk put in because it gives people walking a false sense of security that they're in a crosswalk.
Even if it's like within two blocks of school?
It all depends. So it, it has to meet the standards in order for that crosswalk to be installed because sometimes, like I say, sometimes crosswalks, if they're put in and they're not, and they don't meet the standards, it can be more dangerous than not putting in a crosswalk. Yes, ma'am. It just gives people a false sense that, and while they may be in the right, those cars are not as forgiving. So Ingrid and Jeff...
And there's no way like they would consider like a three-way stop there because it's too close to...
So I am not the one with, with all of the information on the standards. That's something that Ingrid and Jeff can talk with you and Mr. Labadia about, give you some information on how to proceed.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Final...
Virginia Howgan, 2503 R Street, Southeast Auburn, 98002. And if we're talking sidewalks tonight, I know full well about security and sidewalks and a sense of well-being when I try to cross R Street Southeast in the middle of the day. And that some of those nice people actually allow me to use a crosswalk, thank you very much. Do not believe that you should never have a sidewalk in your neighborhood or a, or a crosswalk or any kind of safety setup put together by the city of Auburn. And we must force developers to do what we need in our neighborhoods, not just give them free gratis. Anyway, I'm not here for that. I'm here to say thank you very much because now I see a couple of cops on bicycles in my neighborhood. Many years ago, the Honorable, former council member Patrick Burns, I believe he was a judge at one time. And he simply sat before us and he said to the city council, "Hey, we can get the mayor to put $500,000 in his budget for fire equipment only." And all of a sudden, I'm not on the council anymore, but I get to see these beautiful red rigs going by that we helped pay for. The city said, "Yes, we need fire equipment, and we got it." And that's where we need to put our money. I have seen a big red rig that is emergency, it's emergency, what do they call that? It's the incident response vehicle? Wow, you should see it. It's incredible. And a very polite young man, not real young, but he's a fire, he's a battalion chief, and he showed me everything in the truck, and I was so glad I got to see it. And I thank our fire people and our police officers for always remembering to be very polite. What else? Oh, and, hey, if we got somebody going to put little power lines and all kinds of stuff around your, and they're going to dig up the ground and they're going to put it underground, be careful, folks, because I know what my neighborhood did when they discovered that Virginia Howgan had a telephone pole right in her front yard. All of a sudden, I had lines all over my yard. I had to fake it. I had to go to a utility company and pretend I was somebody else and have things removed from across my driveway. And I know what happens when you dig a hole in the front of your house and you fill it with gravel. It rains a lot. And I had trees that left the, they cut down the tree, and then the roots rotted. And I ended up with holes. And if you ever had your foot go in clear up to your hip in a sinkhole, it ain't fun. I struggled to get out, but then I was young enough to get out of it. Now I don't think I could. We have to worry about when we're digging up and we're putting in utility lines and things. It doesn't matter. We could be putting gas mains in. When you dig a hole and you fill it with crushed rock, the rain will cause settling, and you will end up with a sinkhole. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Final time. Anyone else like to speak? All right, we will move on. Do we have any correspondence this evening, Sean?
Yes, Your Honor. A letter from Wireless Policy Group was provided to council and mayor prior to this evening.
Thank you. All right. Council Ad-Hoc Committee reports. I believe we have only one, well, no, we have two ad hoc committees. We have the Council Ad-Hoc Committee for Finance, and I believe for the final time of the year, will be Councilmember Brown. Is that correct? Okay.
That is correct, Mayor. Thank you very much. The finance report for 12/17/2018, the claims vouchers, we received 175 of them and three wire transfers from the voucher report dated 12/17 for a total amount of $5,310,000. All claims were reviewed and were reasonable and in good order. The payroll vouchers from 12, excuse me, 11/29 through 12/12 were also reviewed. There were 17 checks, 300, excuse me, 532 direct deposits, and eight associated electronic funds transfers for tax, retirement, et cetera. The total for all payroll expenditures was $2,220,000. The finance committee does recommend approval.
Thank you. All right. Also, we had an ad hoc committee for council, dia seating. Who, Councilmember Pelosa?
Thank you, Mayor. I spoke to Deputy Mayor Baggett this evening. And for the, we have not had a meeting scheduled, but we plan to do so before the January 7th council meeting.
Okay, and so, Mr. City Attorney, are there any problems with that? Since I believe a motion needs to be made for seating.
No, Mayor. Until changed, the seating order will remain the same.
So it would just be the deputy mayor's changing spots until the new seating arrangement would be made?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
And Mayor...
It's on.
Mayor, what we had planned to do is contact each council member?
No.
No? You can't do that?
No, you cannot do that.
You mean just...
That's a chain meeting.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Okay.
So please do not.
Okay.
All right. You can have discussion on the council floor, but you cannot contact and have discussion with all seven council members. Okay. No, you can't. That's four. Only if those two were the ones that are already on the ad hoc committee. Oh, darn. Trying to keep us out of trouble here. All right. We will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Pelosa.
Yes, Mayor. I move that the, we approve the consent agenda this evening.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Wells.
I second that.
Thank you. Councilmember Pelosa.
Yes. Yes, Mayor. The consent agenda this evening sets forth the minutes of the April 24th, the June 26th, July 24th, 2017 minutes, and November 26th, 2018 study session. And it also covers the minutes of the December 3rd, 2018 regular council meeting. It also covers the claims and vouchers, payroll vouchers that were discussed earlier. And it also includes the 2019 annual on-call agreements for professional services.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right. So the unfinished business was the seating assignment. And so we will hold that over, and it will be unfinished business at our next council meeting. We have no new business this evening, so we'll move to ordinances. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 6698. Ordinance number 6698, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, relating to planning, adopting 2018 Annual Comprehensive Plan Map and Text Amendments pursuant to the provisions of RCW Chapter 3670A and adopting corresponding rezones related to certain map amendments.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember DeCoursey?
I move for the adoption of ordinance 6698.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Holman?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember DeCoursey?
This is, as the city attorney stated, this ordinance is related to planning and adopting our annual comprehensive plan map. This year, there are 15 separate comprehensive plan items. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission with their recommendations to the city council as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of ordinance number 6698, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Ordinance number 6699, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, amending Sections 19.02, 1.115, 19.02.120, 19.02.130, and 19.02.140 of the Auburn City Code relating to school impact fees.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Wales?
I move for the approval of ordinance number 6699.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Holman?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Wales?
We annually do this and it allows for the approval of a school impact fees for the building of new schools from a number of districts that reside in our community.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of ordinance number 6699, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Ordinance number 6707, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, relating to telecommunications infrastructure and adopting a new chapter 20.14, small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. I believe we have a staff, Ingrid, did you want to address council?
Sure. So in light of the comments that everybody received today from AT&amp;T and from the others that presented here, we are not currently proposing to make any changes to the draft code in front of you because of the requirement to have these in place by the January 14th date. Staff are currently working on a response to the comments that we've received from the various providers. And what we would ask is that we move forward, get this in place so that we have the regulations in place that we need so that we can start addressing small cells. Once the regulations, the federal regulations are in place by January 14th, much of their concerns, we've heard them, we understand, and we will put together a specific response to each of them.
Great, thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Wales?
I move for the approval of ordinance.
Your microphone, please.
Darn. I'm glad you don't have an electric prod to remind me. I'm moving for the approval of ordinance 6707.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember DeCoursey?
Second motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Wales?
I want to thank you, Ingrid, for taking the time to give us a blow-by-blow response to each one of the concerns and I like our game plan. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance number 6707, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Thank you, Ingrid.
Ordinance number 6708, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, creating new Sections 15.20.075 and 15.20.077 and amending Sections 1.25.030, 1.25.040, 1.25.065, and 15.20.030 of the Auburn City Code relating to code enforcement.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember DeCoursey?
I move for the adoption of ordinance 6708.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel?
I second that.
Thank you. Councilmember DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a presentation on this in our last study session, and this ordinance that will provide, will provide the code compliance officers some additional tools related to enforcement of city codes. And just as an example, if we have an issue related to illegal dumping or dumping solid or liquid waste into a wetland, currently, our procedure requires an extensive process for code enforcement to address the issue. This ordinance would allow the individuals involved in code enforcement to proceed directly to the issuance of a citation in such issues like that and other changes to make it more flexible for code enforcement.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? All those in favor of ordinance number 6708, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Resolution number 5396, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Auburn and the lowest responsible bidder for the Auburn Arts and Culture Center main floor interior demolition project.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Pelosi?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for the adoption of resolution 5396.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Holman?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Pelosi?
Thank you. The city of Auburn has received grant funding through the Organization for Culture for renovation work at the Auburn Arts and Cultural Center, and that is next to the Auburn Avenue Theater.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? All those in favor of resolution number 5396, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Resolution number 5398, a resolution of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, related to the lead service line replacement program, authorizing an application for the drinking water state revolving fund loan and if approved, acceptance and expenditure of loan proceeds.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember DeCoursey?
I move for the adoption of resolution 5398.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would second that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution authorizes the city to apply for a $3 million loan through the Washington Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan Program that will facilitate replacement of old water service lines that may contain lead components.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? Councilmember Pelosi?
Thank you, Mayor. Engineering question. Ingrid, how are these service lines determined?
So mostly, it's by the age of the potential service line, and I would say that it's not the entire service line that is the concern. It is specifically the lead gooseneck connection to the main line on the service line that may have small amounts of lead in the components for the older services within the city.
So, so we already have these service lines identified?
We have areas that we believe were installed prior to the timeframe that the manufacturing process changed, and so we will be doing some investigation of those areas this year while we are waiting for the potential loan to go through so that we can replace those lines if they are indeed found to have some lead components.
Okay, thank you. One more question, Mayor?
Let me just check. Does anyone else have any questions before we? Okay. Proceed.
What is the percent of the loan?
Percent related to, oh, for the payback?
Yeah.
I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but I believe it's under 3%. It's fairly small.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All those in favor of resolution number 5398, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
You might say you got the lead out.
Oh, you might. I wouldn't. You might.
Resolution number 5399, a resolution of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, related to council rules of procedure, amending the designation of special focus areas and amending the council rules of procedure.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to move resolution number 5399.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Wales?
I'll second.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. The council's rules and procedures designate the council's special focus areas. At its December 10th study session this year, the council reviewed the administration and staff recommendations and provided input to the special focus areas, and this is what we'll be voting on.
And council, I believe you all received a copy at your places today. If you have any, are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Wales?
Thank you. Oh, it's on. When you look at Section A on page one of Exhibit A, Resolution 5399, about the fourth line or fifth line from the bottom of that paragraph, the focus groups shall consist of the following. Should they have their new names?
They should indeed have their new names. I missed that, and with council's permission, we'll correct that in the final copy.
I mean, it's not much, but, okay, thank you very much.
Good catch.
Do we need an amendment to?
I think it's just a scribe, nurse.
Great. Good, easy.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Wales?
I appreciate the work that the staff did in coming up with some ideas to make our job easier and more effective. Thank you.
Thank you. And for one final time in 2018, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we will move on to mayor and council member reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. And sitting in and accepting the position early, Councilmember Pelosi, we will start with you this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity to attend the airport open house last Saturday, the Auburn Airport. And Jamel Garcia was there welcoming everyone, and they had a real nice brunch for everyone. So we chatted with several people, and there was a lot of motivation going on within the open house. It appears that we have received some new tenants, which is A-OK with the city council. And I was impressed and with everyone. The new manager wasn't there, unfortunately, but I, personally, I'm gonna miss Jamel because he has done a sterling job running our airport. And with it now coming in-house, Ingrid's gonna make sure that things are run smoothly. And I know that Ingrid will do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. We will go next to Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Okay, thank you. I was pretty busy. I had, on December 5th, I went to Seattle with my King County Regional Water Quality Committee. And basically, we just went over some things that we didn't cover from the previous two meetings that were canceled. Then on December 6th, I went to my Regional Law and Justice Committee, and on that one, we just re-elected our new chairs and vice-chairs and went over our agenda for next year's, our topics and stuff that we want to bring to our committees. Then I went to my domestic violence on December 6th as well in Seattle, and we covered a lot of things on what is coming down on the legislative body and how our domestic violence advocates do their job and work with our prosecutor attorneys and stuff like that. Then after that, then I went, on the 14th of this month, I went with several of our council members and the mayor and some of our staffs to Green River Community College. They had an all-day workshop that covered advancing racial equity. That covered a lot of things that really made me feel like it's by time that we start talking about racial equity within our workplaces, our schools, our council. We had several elective officials there. We had people, social workers, we had, there was so many, two tribals, women spoke, and also the mayor from Beryan, he spoke about the hardship he has been having since being the first Hispanic mayor. And they asked us at our legislative meeting with all the elected officials in there, what is, two things or a few things that you are going to want to do yourself? And I, knowing, being the first Latina woman on city council in the city of Auburn, has been a little tough, but I've always said, my mom and dad says, you know, you've got tough shoulders, build them tougher and always be true to yourself and know who you are. And I'm, and I think I have done that in this council, and I will continue doing that. But one of the tribal ladies says that her uncle told her to be bold, not be afraid, let the feariness go away, and just, you know, be who you are. And that's basically what I shared at the meeting that I'm going to be doing with my last three years that I've got re-elected, and I'm going to do that. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wales?
I always remember to turn the mic off on when I have no report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
It's been a busy two weeks, and I won't report on anything that's going to come out by, in other reports that I attended with other council members. I'll leave that to them. The one incident where, the one meeting that I had that was not attended by anyone else was the Sound Cities Association's Public Issues Committee on Wednesday, the 12th. And I had the great pleasure of putting in the nomination and then voting for Mayor Nancy Backus as the board member of the Sound Cities Association. So congratulations. You won by unanimous consent.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate you taking my place that night since it was our open house, our mayor's open house, so I do appreciate you stepping in.
We were juggling.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to report that tonight would conclude my first year on council, and I want to thank my fellow council members who helped me, mentored me, cautioned me, swore at me, no, never did that happen, but, and the mayor. I just want to thank everybody. And the staff, directors have been very welcoming, teaching me what I need to know to discharge my duties. So I just appreciate it and look forward to next year. Wish everyone a happy holiday.
Thank you, and you've been a very quick, steady council member. We appreciate your willingness to serve. Councilmember DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. It's hard to believe that it's been one year already, but time really flies as we get a little bit older. I think we've all been pretty busy the past few weeks. For me, on December 5th, I attended the Affordable Housing Advisory Board meeting, which was held at the Department of Commerce in Olympia for this meeting. And a couple of items I'll touch on, we had a very long agenda, a very long meeting. Two of the items was a continuation of the review of the 2019 Affordable Housing Advisory Board Legislative Action Plan. This plan included the updates and reports from action item members' assignments. And just as a reminder, the action items for the Ahab legislative session includes the condo liability law, the Growth Management Act, planning grants, the multifamily tax exemption, minimum density in local jurisdictions, project reviews, local incentives and impact fees. And the two areas that I am responsible for heading up out of those are the local incentives and impact fees. And just to talk on, touch on the local incentive for a moment, that is to provide the housing development and policy adoption through funding criteria that would be an objective to have the state create an effective incentive for jurisdictions to make progress toward meeting local housing goals by requiring agencies to embed housing considerations into their funding prioritization schemes. So there's a few methods of how to accomplish that, but it's gonna be a hot topic to talk to our local, our state legislators on, at the next section, session. And this will touch on the affordable housing aspect of those earning 80% of the area median income and under. The other arm I'd like to touch on is, the Affordable Housing Advisory Board drafted a letter to the governor related to the recent requirement of the Senate Bill Number 5493. That bill required a modification of paying prevailing wages to commercial rates in some disciplines. So for example, landscapers who were paid approximately $20 an hour under this provision of the bill paying commercial rates automatically moved to a rate of close to $50 an hour. Many contractors pulled contracts from agencies such as housing authorities. to $50 an hour. Many contractors pulled contracts from agencies such as housing authorities. They refused to place bids because of the gross disparity between what they normally pay their, their employees and what the state prevailing wage law requires in that as well. So, the governor's been made aware of that risen wage rate issue and the organizations that are impacted by this, and it informs the governor of the negative impact of the bill, the current causes and effects, and that we would like the governor and the legislature to address this issue in 2019, especially related to affordable housing providers. Then on December 7th, I attended the all-day meeting of the Wash, Association of Washington Cities Board of Directors. Just briefly on that one, a long agenda for that day, a long meeting that day, but just very briefly, we adopted and passed the 2019 operating budget for AWC and the proposed capital budget. Very little change between the 2018 and 2019 budget, just a, a few thousand dollars here and there. Key item was for cities to look at how we are able to take care of the accelerated mortgage payment of the buildings owned by AWC in Olympia, and the board action was to approve another year of accelerated payments, which by the end of the term of the mortgage payment for the buildings in Olympia will save AWC approximately $300,000. Then on December 12th, with Deputy Mayor Baggett and I, at our development over at the River Estates here in Auburn, we attended a veterans' celebration that took place that afternoon. And the entire topic that day was not only honoring our veterans who served in the wars, but also to review what was known as the forgotten war, the Korean War. And we had a gentleman from the Veterans of Foreign Wars out of Pualip come in as a guest speaker, and he reminded everybody of the devastation of that war. Not only were the casualties just staggering, but soldiers and, and others had to endure temperatures in the winter of 30 to 40 below zero. It was just horrible. The cap, and, and the day, we had a video that showed the actual impact of the war itself, the soldiers on the ground, and the impact to residents and citizens in South Korea. And at the end of the day, South Korea remained free. And then lastly, on the 13th, Deputy Mayor Baggett and I attended a open house town hall at the library held by the 47th District Representatives. And this was just more of a, just open communication. We just wanted to see what was going on. It was interesting, we had a number of local affected officials, elected officials from various jurisdictions there, and we were asked to provide some, some priorities on issues that were raised that evening, and everybody was given little dots to put on the, on the, on the little papers that were identifying the issues. And the one that had the most dots on it was the sales tax mitigation issue. So, we have now opened up the eyes of our legislators once again that our cities are impacted with the recent issue related to sales tax mitigation. That's my report.
Thank you. And counsel member DeCoursey, are you talking about the streamlined sales tax mitigation?
I'm sorry, streamlined sales tax mitigation, yes.
And unfortunately, that does not appear in the governor's-
It did not.
-original budget, but there is hope that, because we know that the budget as originally proposed is not what it looks like when it is complete with the state legislature. So, we will hold out hope that that mitigation continues. Auburn was considered one of the loser cities, if you will, when streamlined sales tax went into effect. So, there is a great deal, as you know, in the valley, Auburn and Kent, the warehouses. And so, it used to be that it was the point of sale, and when streamlined sales tax went into effect, it was the point of purchase. So, while cities like Auburn and Kent are bearing the burden of warehousing and what that impact is on our local roads, there are cities that do not have the warehousing and do not have that impact on their roads that are getting the benefit of the sales tax. And so, at the time that went into effect, the state legislature proposed freezing what our stream, what our sales tax was at that point in time. And so, Kent has been receiving roughly four and a half million dollars annually. City of Auburn is receiving close to $2 million annually, but that is nowhere near covering what has occurred since then. It merely capped us at where we were in 2008 or 2009 when that went into effect. And so, all of that sales tax since that point in time has been going to the winter cities, if you will. And so, we have been asking the state to continue with those mitigation payments to try and help absorb some of the costs that we no longer have a revenue stream for to impact positively our roads. So, thank you for your work on that. Few things that I have been working on the last few weeks, on Wednesday, December 5th, in Seattle, once again, for the Advisory Committee and Executive Leadership Group with King County Executive Constantine and Seattle Mayor Durkin, as we are attempting to put together a regional governance model for working on homelessness issues. We know that the issue is not simply King, King County or Seattle centric, and what works in Seattle is probably not going to work in Auburn or in Burian or in Bellevue. And so, Sound Cities Association, of which you heard we are a member, we continue to make sure that our voice is heard so that we are not lost in this fight. We do believe in a regional approach, but the devil is in the details, and so we will continue to be present in those conversations to ensure that our voices are heard and that the dollars spent on homelessness are spent in a very thoughtful, meaningful, efficient, and effective way. So, those meetings will continue. Saturday morning, we had breakfast with Santa. Counsel member Pelosi and Deputy Mayor Baggett were there, and counsel member Trout Manuel was at the second seating with Santa. Always a fun event. Daryl, what's that? Oh, and counsel member Brown, that's right, and you brought your grandson with you. Yes, we had a, a great time serving. We got to see Santa, and I think everyone had a great time. We try and make sure that that is an affordable and fun breakfast so that everyone is welcome, everyone can attend. And then immediately following that, I went up to the Overcomers Covenants Church on Military Road. It's an Auburn address, but it's Federal Way Unincorporated Area of King County, to help with their Christmas toy giveaway for about 800 children. So, quite a big event there. On Tuesday, the 11th, along with several of our council members, the annual South Sound Chambers of Commerce Legislative Coalition Breakfast, and some of the topics, legislative priorities this year, and you've heard some from counsel member DeCoursey, transportation is going to continue to be of great importance in Olympia for all of us. Affordable housing, condominium liability reform, and on Wednesday at Pete Von Rockbauer's Good Eggs Breakfast, Speaker Frank Chop was there, and he said that he does believe there will be condominium reform laws passed this year, perhaps not to the full intent of what he would like to see, but he does believe that there is bipartisan support for condominium reform, because we do know that that is one great opportunity for entry-level homeownership that doesn't now occur because of the condominium liability laws that are in place. You can't even build condominiums before there are lawsuits. So, that's why a lot of these, a lot of multifamily goes into apartments as opposed to the opportunity for a homeownership. And our holiday open house at the Auburn Community and Events Center, thanks to those of you who were able to attend, and those of you in the community, it was a great turnout. If you didn't get a chance to join us this year, I hope you consider joining us next year. We have great food, great local entertainment, and just an opportunity to wish each other a happy holiday, whatever holiday you choose to celebrate. And this past Saturday, two events at 10:00 AM at our local Walmart was Shop With a Cop, and that's thanks to the Auburn Police Officers Association, the APOA, Washington State Patrol, and also the Algonah Officers. There were 47 students from the City of Auburn or the Auburn area that had an opportunity to shop with a police officer or a Washington, Washington State Trooper. Each of them had $100 that they were able to spend, and what was really amazing is most of those kids were not spending that money just on themselves, but they were getting presents for their parents, for their brothers and sisters. And I helped one young man who had bought presents also for his two cats and for two of his teachers. And so, it, it's just touching to know that these kids, while they could have simply bought it on all toys for themselves, wanted to make sure that their family members and friends were having a wonderful holiday as well. And then headed to Jildo Ray Elementary School for their toy giveaway. Again, a lot of community support. Lakeland Hills held a toy drive, and the proceeds from that were given to Jildo Ray for, for that toy drive. It's always fun to see the faces of the kids and the parents, knowing that they are going to have something to put under the tree for their children. And with that, one more event tomorrow night, Crafts With a Cop at Go Brewing. So, if you are finished with your holiday shopping and you want to go do something fun, go meet up with our cops at Go Brewing and do some crafts with them. With that, I would like to wish counsel, and thank you for a great and productive year. There were a lot of things that we accomplished this year. I am proud to serve with you. I want to thank our directors and our, and our team that do this work on a daily basis dedicated to making the City of Auburn a better place to live, and I am proud to work with each one of you. I wish you a happy holiday, a Merry Christmas, whatever, whatever holiday you choose to enjoy. I hope it is a happy one. Happy New Year, and we will see you in 2019. Mr. City Attorney, no need for an executive session, is there? I do have a gavel in my hand.
No, your honor.
Excellent. We are adjourned. Thank you.